Members of the public who wish to speak are invited to join city council meetings either by connecting through Zoom or calling in by phone. Dial 900-6833 and use meeting ID, 914-0075-0676 followed by the pound sign. When joining by phone, you can virtually raise your hand to speak by pressing star nine on your keypad. The public is encouraged to call
Are you looking to make a difference in our community? One way to do that is by becoming involved in local government. By signing up for one of the many boards and commissions, you can have a direct impact on the decisions that shape the future of Vallejo. Whether it's advocating for policies that matter to you, improving parks and schools, or planning and developing the future. Your voice can be heard through local government. But it's not just about making a difference. Serving on a board or commission can also be a great opportunity for personal growth and development. You'll have the opportunity to learn new skills, meet new people, and gain valuable experience that can enhance your resume and career. The city of Vallejo currently has several positions available, so there is no question that this is your chance to get involved. Take the first step towards making a positive impact in your community by signing up for a City of Vallejo Board or Commission today. Be the change you want to see. Apply for a board or commission at cityofvallejo.net or contact city.clerk@cityofvallejo.net for more information.
I started volunteering about 2018 here in Vallejo. I saw a leader that created opportunities for people to get involved, and I was like, hey, I want to be a part of that. And it was cleanups. And so I was excited to participate every month and to get more people to join the cleanup because it was important. I really felt that it was important.
Volunteering has really helped enrich my understanding of our Vallejo community, the different issues that all of our different neighborhoods go through, and ways that we can improve the city of Vallejo as a whole.
We've had a monthly cleanup event sponsored by the city and the fact that they do send drivers to pick up the garbage and provide us with the necessary tools. There's been some good friendships that have been created, and people look forward to these almost like a social adventure. So it's not so much this is a drudgery, but it's something that people look forward to.
The city of Vallejo has launched a new public comment system for speakers who wish to participate during city council meetings and other public meetings held in the council chambers. The QLISK kiosk system will streamline and improve the ability for council to verify which items the public wish to speak on and reduces issues with legibility, order of signup, and overall visibility of which topics the speaking party has registered for. To get started, after you have entered city council chambers, you'll be met with one of the new kiosk systems by the front entrance. The agenda item topics will be opened and available for the public to begin registration 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. To start, tap the screen and you will be prompted to enter your name or alias you wish to be identified as. Following the input of your name, you will be prompted to select the topic you wish to speak on, like community forum, action items, etc. Once selected, you are finished, and your name will appear on the screen located on the left side of the chambers in the order it was received. If you are interested in speaking on multiple items, you will simply have to repeat the process and select the additional items you wish to speak on. Once the signup period has concluded, participants will be called up by name or alias provided in the order they signed up for their opportunity to speak for the allotted time provided. The public will still be able to participate by Zoom or telephone. That specific process requires you to either hit star nine on your telephone or simply raise your hand on the Zoom application.
Vallejo, we do it differently here. There's a spirit that can't be summed up in words. You know who we are, and if you don't, we'll be sure to let you know where we're from. I'm from Vallejo.
We are Vallejo.
I'm from Vallejo.
I'm from Vallejo.
I'm from Vallejo.
Introducing VIP, Vallejo's internet provider. Prepare to experience a new level of internet speed, reliability, and affordability for Vallejo. Stream your favorite shows in stunning 4K, download files in seconds while connecting with loved ones without interruptions. Our expert team has worked tirelessly to bring cutting-edge fiber optic technology to every corner of Vallejo. Transforming how you experience the internet. Community-based and community-owned, VIP Fiber delivers ultra-fast internet and reliable service ideal for distance learning, telemedicine, remote work, gaming, streaming television, and more. VIP subscribers also gain access to our customer support team who is available around the clock to assist you. VIP's residential plans start at just $65 a month for symmetrical 100 meg uploads and downloads. No data caps, and if you qualify for the Affordable Connectivity Program, you'll get $30 off your monthly bill. Visit vipfiber.com or call 877-792-3734 to start your VIP experience. Commercial plans available as well. VIP Fiber, Vallejo's internet provider.
Vallejo, California, a city steeped in California's rich history. Founded in 1851 by General Mariano Guadalupe Vallejo, our city has played a pivotal role in shaping the Golden State. Did you know Vallejo served as California's capital twice in the 1850s? But our true claim to fame is the Mare Island Naval Shipyard, established in 1854. For over 140 years, it was the heart of our community, driving growth and innovation. Today, Vallejo stands as a testament to resilience and progress, honoring its past while embracing a bright future.
The new SR37 Fairgrounds Drive Diverging Diamond Interchange, or DDI, project, will improve safety and multimodal access while adding capacity to support decades of future growth. Traffic studies of the Fairgrounds Drive corridor show that construction of a DDI will reduce congestion and improve traffic flow. Pedestrian crossing times will be faster and safer and walking distances from transit will be shortened. Many drivers report that DDIs are intuitive, and here's how they work. Drivers crossing the highway on Fairgrounds Drive southbound towards Six Flags will go through a traffic signal, cross to the opposite side of the road under the bridge, and then cross back over again through another traffic signal. Clear signage and striping ensure that vehicles follow the correct path. Traffic traveling northbound on Fairgrounds will do the same thing. At the first signal, they cross to the opposite side of the road, go under the highway bridge, and then cross back over again as they leave the DDI. Vehicles turning onto the freeway will have a free movement without stopping. This allows a lot more vehicles to move through the interchange than a conventional interchange configuration, and it helps reduce wait times. Vehicles exiting the freeway will be controlled by traffic signals to allow for safe merging of vehicles and safe passage of pedestrians within the crosswalks. Bicycles travel through the DDI in marked green shading bike lanes and remain to the right of vehicular traffic. Pedestrians will travel through the barrier-protected center median and cross at the signals at each end of the DDI. All crosswalks are protected by traffic signals helping to improve safety. This shows where the new bus stop will be located and how the bus will travel through the intersection to get to and from the bus stop. This project is brought to you by the Solano Transportation Authority, Caltrans, Solano County, and the City of Vallejo.
Hello, I'm Kevin Brown, Public Information Officer with Vallejo Fire Department. We're out here today at Six Flags Discovery Kingdom where we held a large training evolution from multiple agencies across East and Bay Area. Vallejo Fire Department played as host, but we have representatives from Solano County, Napa County, and Contra Costa County hazmat teams, California Offices of Emergency Services, Solano Offices of Emergency Services, as well as numerous other local agencies. The purpose of today's drill was to simulate a hazardous materials incident spill inside the park that produced several dozen mock patients. We took those patients through a simulated real-world hazardous material experience. Those patients were transported to several local area hospitals within the county, both by ground ambulance from Medic Ambulance Company, as well as by helicopter, CHP H30, and Reach Helicopter Service. It's a phenomenal way for us to practice our inter-agency drills and communications to ensure if a real-world incident like this were to occur anywhere in our region, we can rally up our resources quickly and provide the local community with top-notch professional emergency first aid fire rescue service. As a thank you to all the participating agencies today, a big thank you from us, the Vallejo Fire Department, and City of Vallejo to all the local fire departments, Solano, Napa, and Contra Costa County hazmat teams, as well as Medic Ambulance, Pace Solano to serve as a transport agency, and again Discovery Kingdom for serving as the host venue.
Well, Vallejo is a great place to live and work. For many of us, we lived in Vallejo and we drove outside the county for many years. And we realized that we were really missing an opportunity to remain in the county and put our tax dollars to work here in the county. And so many of us are now working in Solano County and remaining, having our homes in Vallejo. It's a great place to live. We talk about a diverse community, when we talk about bilingual, bicultural employees, we're talking about Vallejo.
This town has an incredible heritage of patriotic industrial grit and craftsmanship. I mean, the location of Vallejo, you don't know that if you threw it on a map, you could pinpoint it any better.
You've got great access to the city of San Francisco here in Vallejo because the ferry comes literally a half a block down the road and ports right here. So we've got a lot of opportunity here to pull from resources within all of the Bay Area that makes us very accessible.
The citizens of Vallejo, I've never been anywhere where people are striving as much as they are in Vallejo to improve and move towards greatness. And I think that's important because our university has the same philosophy.
That alone, that talent pool that you've got from a diverse, I mean, what other cities in America can you drive into rural agrarian economy within a few minutes? You can, any kind of business you can imagine is within a short drive of Vallejo. That's got to have some sort of a positive impact on the kinds of people who might want to move here in the future, might want to live here, and the companies that want to relocate here.
When you come to Mare Island, it was kind of a slam dunk. There was everything here that production would want, from parks to schools to some, you know, the old naval hospital, for example. And the city is easy to work with. I think a lot of the businesses are easy to work with, have been very welcoming to production, and it makes my job easier.
You can live on the water in Northern California. It's kind of amazing to me. I mean, I'm just, I'm not just doing this for the video. I can't believe that, like, I'm not into residential real estate, but if I was, I'd be buying up in Vallejo.
I moved to Vallejo about a year and a half. I moved here and bought a house. And since I've started working here, I've really seen a great impact in the local community and just the economics with all this great work coming to Vallejo.
We're doing building rehabilitations now. We're doing environmental cleanup right now that will facilitate businesses coming in now and in the future. We're finding once space is ready, we have businesses that are interested in occupying that space and bringing jobs here.
I think you'll see in the next couple of years, you'll see other distilleries, other wineries.
I'm Grady Grace.
I know that.
Yeah, just been having like my little appointments every week, but. Yeah, thank you. I got through the rough, so, through the rough part. How you doing? Right, right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Am I in the right seat? Because, no. I am, because you're talking about that lady that sit right there? Okay, yeah, okay. That was the gentleman there. Yeah, I wonder if she come in tonight, because I want to support her to the side, lady, woman to woman.
You the one who, you were online.
You the one they swore in?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. How you doing today?
I'm confused.
Did you?
But I'm good.
Oh, I was confused too, the first few weeks.
That's what I was getting ready to say.
It'd be a lot. I think it was me for, it was the agenda. You know, like going through, because the chair and what's the gentleman name that sit right there? It seemed like he, like.
Yeah, he knows, yeah.
A lot. And it's like, ooh, they was, they love verbiage.
I was trying to get used to it, because everything you read, there's a lot of acronyms. And I was trying to legalize myself with the acronyms.
Yeah, it's the verb, it's the verbiage, almost like real estate. You gotta know that verbiage a little bit.
But it's okay. It's just that it's so much going on everywhere.
Right, right. But I got, Ms. Alicia, I got your email today. That's a good one about the grant. Yeah, I know you was relieved.
Yeah. Yeah.
Shari, have you heard from new council member? Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Housing and Community Development Commission Regular Meeting. I call this meeting to order, it is now seven zero five. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have roll call, please?
Through the chair, um, we have the election of Chair and Vice Chair first.
One moment, please. We do, thank you. Wrong page. We will now proceed to the Agenda Item Number Three, Election of Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you. Through the chair, our recommendation is for the commission to nominate and elect a chairperson, and nominate and elect a vice chair. So every board, commission, and committee shall elect a chairperson and a vice chairperson from among its members. Each shall serve a term of one year until a successor is appointed and takes office. So we would like to, um, have the commissioners elect, nominate a chair, and you could also self-nominate if you wish.
So, new commissioners, how that works is that you, um, take a moment on, on the agenda, and you consider positions that are available, and both Chair and Vice Chair are both available, and you nominate someone, and then we vote. That's how that works. I'll now give you exactly one minute. Thank you.
Commissioners, your time is up, Shari. Through the chair, do we have any nominations for the position of chairperson?
I'm sorry, to the chair and to the commission, um, and to, um, the House Authority, I nominate Mr., uh, back to the chair to be the chair, and then Mr. Bundy to be the vice chair.
Through the chair, um, we'll start with the chairperson first, yeah, yeah. Could you repeat the, your nomination for the chair?
Sure, for the chair, I nominate the. Oh, Ms. Jackson. Sorry, Ms. Jackson. I am confused. I know, I, to the commission, I do apologize, I nominate Ms. Jackson to, um, to be the chair for another term with us.
Up through the chair, I'm, I'm so sorry. Um, and I didn't mention that actually a member may serve no more than two consecutive years as chairperson. Chair Jackson has served. I believe.
Right, can we get to one minute?
Yeah. So Shari, let's, let's answer a different question for them. I can't serve as chair, can I serve as vice chair? I can't remember.
Yes, I'm, yes, as chair, a member, a member may serve no more than two consecutive years as chairperson.
Okay, very good. So let me go first, let me help set the tone, can we do that? Fantastic. So commissioners and, um, members of the community, I nominate Mr. Bundy as Chair of the Housing, um, of the, of the Housing and City Development Commission. I nominate him as chair, that's my vote. Let's do chair first, can we do that?
Member of the chair, I second that motion for Mr. Bundy to be nominated as chair, as chair.
Uh, I also nominate, uh, Commissioner Bundy to be Chair.
Through the chair, I also nominate Commissioner Bundy to be the chair.
To the chair, I also nominate Mr. Bundy as chair.
Through the chair, we could do a vote for, um, the chair's, uh, election.
Absolutely, let's, let's do a vote now, please.
For the position of chairperson, we have Commissioner Bundy. Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Daniels? Jackson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stulend?
Aye.
Commissioner Vance is absent, excused.
We will now move to the nomination of Vice Chair.
Yeah. Through the chair, I would like to nominate Commissioner Jackson, uh, to Vice Chair.
I second that nomination.
Can we do, um. No, we can't do roll call yet. Commissioner Smith, go ahead, please. Let's have her.
I also nominate Commissioner Chair Jackson to be the Vice Chair.
To the chair, I also agree with that nominee.
Let's do roll call. I abstain. I am myself. Let's go for it.
Chair Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioners Cassidy?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stulend?
Aye.
Commissioner Vance is absent, excused. We have a new Chair and Vice Chair for the Housing and Community Development Commission, uh, Chair Bundy and Vice Chair Jackson.
You do.
So through the chair, uh, Chair Bundy, so typically we would have you switch chairs, but, um, Jason is, uh, here covering for Manny. Uh, we'll do it at the following meeting when Manny's here.
It's on you now.
So, moving on to Item Five, Presentations and Commendations.
Oh, through the chair, um, could we do roll call, please?
Sorry, roll call. Item Four.
Thank you. Commissioners Bundy?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Daniels?
Here.
Jackson?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
Stulend?
Here.
Again, Commissioner Vance is absent, excused.
So for Item Five, Presentations and Commendations, Item A is a presentation by Community Development Block Grant Subrecipient, the Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California.
Through the chair, uh, we have a presentation from one of our, uh, CDBG subrecipient, Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California, Julia Howard Gibbon, their legal director is here. And she has a slideshow for the commission and for the members of the public.
Nice to see you all, thanks for having me. Like she said, I am Julia, and I am the legal director at Fancy, which we lovingly, is what we call, uh, Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California. Don't think too hard about it. Um, can you be the one to add the slides, or do I have a clicker? Oh, next slide, please. Okay, so our mission is to ensure equal housing opportunity and to educate the community on the value of diversity in our neighborhoods. You can go to the next slide. So what we do is we enforce fair housing, and when we're talking about fair housing, we're talking about housing discrimination, right? Fair housing is the right to choose housing free from unlawful discrimination based on someone's membership in a protected class. We also sometimes hear the terms affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is, um, to go beyond just addressing discrimination, but to actually take meaningful and proactive steps to counteract historical, um, segregation and acts of discrimination, to create more inclusive communities. Go ahead. So we have services for individuals, hous, the housing industry, for landlords and housing authorities, and for the community. Um, and so I'm gonna talk a little bit more specifically about the work that we have done in Vallejo in the past. So, next slide, please. Oh, and you can go again. Thanks. So we have been serving Vallejo since twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and, uh, we have served a lot of people in this city. The majority of our, uh, clients here are low income, ninety-one percent are low income or below. Um, and all of them essentially are members of protected classes. You can see fifty percent in the last three years were black, twenty-six percent were Latinx, um, the majority had disabilities. We serve a lot of, uh, families with children, people with Section Eight vouchers, people, yeah, so, sorry, next slide. And I know you guys have this packet, so some of these I'm gonna go through a little bit quicker, so I can leave you guys some time to ask questions. So since twenty seventeen, since we first started serving Vallejo, we have served over eight hundred households, almost two thousand individuals. Um, in the last few years, we usually do more than a hundred households a year. Last year, we did a hundred and eleven, we served over a hundred and eleven households. And since we've started serving Vallejo, two hundred and seventy have called us alleging housing discrimination, meaning discrimination based on race, color, disability, source of income, gender, national origin, sexual orientation, familial status, marital status, age, and others. Thanks. Um, so, oh, can you go back one? Here we go. Oh. Sorry, keep going. Thought, thought I skipped a slide. Um, so what we do is one-on-one counseling is a lot of what we do, and that means that we, you know, we intervene when people come to us alleging housing discrimination. We also get involved when people need disability advocacy, so when tenants need reasonable accommodations from their landlords or reasonable modifications. And so what that means is that we are able to, uh, do sort of bread and butter, kind of anti-displacement housing stabilization work, right? We're able to intervene when people really need things that otherwise might result in them losing their housing or not getting into housing. Um, last, in, you know, we've assisted almost fifty people in requesting reasonable accommodations or modifications since twenty seventeen, and forty of those have been granted, meaning that they have gotten the things that they needed. Unit transfers, uh, tenancy extensions, being able to stay in units, mold remediation, assistance, being able to. being able to keep assistance animals, that kind of thing. We also do investigations and testing, and this is really important. We're the only full-service fair housing agency in Solano County, and what we do is we hire and train investigators who pose as covert, like investigators, they go into rental housing and they pose as home seekers, as prospective renters, and thus allows us to see how members of protected classes are being treated, right? So we, you can go ahead to the next one. And we do this, we're sort of, we're really, really good at this. We're sort of like nationally renowned for how good our investigations are. We do this on an individual level, so if someone calls us and says, you know, it looked like I was going to get the house, and then when I, when he found out I was pregnant, suddenly he said it wasn't available anymore, we can have two testers call up, one who has kids or is pregnant and one who isn't, and see what they get told, right? Is the house still available? And if it is, then we can bring a complaint based on that evidence. We also do this in a systemic level. So we will pick a protected class, like race, or national origin, or familial status, and we will test a bunch of landlords in the area to see how or be people being treated, and what is the rate of discrimination based on that protected class. And we've done that in Vallejo for many, many years. We've tested landlords 76 times in Vallejo, and we've had quite a lot of evidence of discrimination here, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And then, like I said before, it, once we find, you know, once we investigate a case and we find evidence of discrimination, we can actually do something about it. We file complaints with, we used to file with HUD, but not so much anymore, but we file with the California Civil Rights Department. We also can file lawsuits, and we've done this many, many times in here and all, you know, all over the areas that we serve, but we filed 15 administrative complaints or lawsuits on behalf of clients in Solano County, or sometimes even on behalf of Fancy. We will, if we find evidence of discrimination in one of our testing investigations, we as an organization can also bring an administrative complaint. And then, of course, we do education and outreach. We do fair housing trainings for landlords, for housing authorities, we, and we have done them for the Vallejo Housing Authority many times. We do know your rights trainings for tenants. We put on an annual fair housing conference. We do a reasonable accommodations conference where we actually train service providers, landlords, and tenants on how to house people with disabilities, and then we do lots of other types of trainings for the community as well. And then we have lots of fair housing literature that we distribute through our partner organizations. We do educational campaigns, PSAs, like email campaigns, sometimes we do radio ads, we engage in policy and community meetings, we do a lot of, we engage in a lot of forums to advance, to further, affirmatively further fair housing and try to advocate for policy that's going to create more inclusive communities. Okay, and so the impact of our services, I feel like this is where it's all leading to. So for individual impacts, right, the impact of our one-on-one advocacy, it's, of course, it's housing stabilization, homelessness prevention, that's sort of our bread and butter, that's really the biggest impact that we have, also expanding access to safe, habitable, and affordable housing for people, right? Opening up doors to people who would otherwise have barriers to entry and addressing discrimination. And then our systemic impacts, right, of our policy advocacy, but also our case outcomes, is expanding access to rental housing for hundreds of people. So if we file a case on behalf of one person because that landlord refused to rent to people with children, and we are, we're able to get, you know, a settlement for that person, but we also will be able to get the landlord to change their policy at all of the units that they manage, right? And now all of a sudden, you've opened up all of those units to families with children. It also, when we win a case and we publicize that, it not only signals to the landlord, right, that we brought that case against, that hopefully they're going to stop discriminating, but to other landlords around, it tells them what their responsibilities are and what hopefully they're going to not do, so that they don't end up in the hot seat as well. Okay, so I don't want to take up too much of your time, so I'll just talk, I put in a few of these cases in here, which you can look at yourself, but I'll just talk about one or two of them. So one of our recent cases was a black Section 8 voucher holder. She was denied housing because she had a Section 8 voucher, but she also believed race played a factor in why they didn't want to rent to her. We tested, and actually our testing investigation confirmed what she had alleged, and so we filed a complaint against the landlord with the California Civil Rights Department. We were able to get her $37,000 settlement, plus they changed their policies, so now they are opening up all of their units to people with Section 8. And then she became stably housed after months and months of being homeless and living in her car while she was looking for housing. And then, of course, when we publicized that case, that sent the message to other landlords, right, you have to rent to people with vouchers. Okay, we can skip this one. I want to talk a little bit about the next one, yeah. So I'll try to keep this short, but this is an exciting one that we settled like two days ago, but, or, maybe it was a week ago now. But this was a case where one of our testing audits a couple of years ago was around criminal background screenings and race discrimination, and we had black and white testers call landlords in Marin's, no, in Solano County, quite a few were in Vallejo, and we found that of the 30 properties that we tested, 25 screened for criminal records, and not one of them sort of followed the state or federal guidelines on how to screen in a very narrow way that's going to not disproportionately exclude black and brown people, right, who are disproportionately arrested and convicted of crimes at a higher rate because of the overpolicing in communities of color. And so we notified all those landlords, we said, we think your policies are problematic. We retested them, and then of the, some of them stopped screening for criminal records altogether, which was awesome. But then some of them didn't, and they continued to have discriminatory policies, so we filed complaints against several of them, and we just settled the first one for $27,000, but they also agreed to overhaul their entire criminal record screening policy at all of their properties in California, which was over almost 4,000 units. So this was a big win. And the next one, we have another one in the hopper right now against a Vallejo landlord, and I think we're about to file about two or three more next week, so that's an exciting one. Okay. We can skip this one, this is about a big Fannie Mae settlement from several years ago where we got money to reinvest in Vallejo, which we have been doing, mostly for first-time home buyers. Okay, so what is the point of all of this? The need for these services are critical, right? Right now, I think, one, there are high rates of discrimination still happening, right? This is a thing that still occurs in all of the communities that we serve, but we find it in Vallejo over and over again. Also, Vallejo has high rates of residential segregation and poverty tracks, right? It's a low resource area, it's definitely an area that needs fair housing services. And also, right now, the federal government is really retreating from civil rights, and so it's more important now than ever for local governments to invest in fair housing and to make sure that we have these protections, right? Because the federal government is retreating from these, and actually hostile towards civil rights. And if we don't continue to do this work, right, discrimination will go unchallenged, but also it sends the message to landlords, if no one is funding this work, that no one, that there's no watchdog, right? And then discrimination will continue to occur. Okay, so the next ones are all about the different testing investigations and the types of complaints that we receive. So I won't go through each one of you, each one of them, but if you're curious, you can see sort of the rates of discrimination that we've found in Vallejo or Solano, actually, I think most of these are based in Solano, because I think it's just a bigger data set. But high rates of race and color discrimination, what's the next one? I think you can kind of go through these quickly. National origin discrimination and immigration status. We're getting more and more calls from people saying their landlords are threatening to call ICE on them. That you can, you can keep going, sorry. Next slide. Source of income discrimination, this is when, it's mostly, most often we see it when landlords are refusing to accept vouchers or any kind of rental subsidy, but we see it, it can be any kind of source of income. Familial status is when there are children in the home, and landlords don't want to rent to families with children, or they have really overly restrictive occupancy restrictions that are, you know, not going to allow for families with children, or disproportionately exclude families with children. Sorry, you can go to the next one. And the next one, too. And then, of course, disability is another big one. So we see high rates of discrimination in all of these protected classes, and we get calls based on other types of protected classes as well. Okay, you can go to the next slide. So I just wanted to talk really briefly about the city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing, right? It means that the city, because we have a state, the federal government is retreating from their AFFH rule, but we have one in California that is very powerful and says that, you know, if you receive state funding, then you need to take steps to create more inclusive communities and sort of right the wrongs of past discrimination. And one very concrete way to do that is to continue to provide comprehensive fair housing services. And then the last slide is just about, your all consolidated plan actually includes Fancy in the consolidated plan, says that you'll continue to fund us to provide fair housing services, which we are very grateful for, and we really appreciate your partnership. It also mentions potentially partnering with us to do homebuyer counseling programs. We, as an organization, do first-time homebuyer counseling, pre-purchase, education, and foreclosure prevention counseling, and so that is another opportunity to partner with us if you are all interested. And that is my entire presentation, I'm happy to take questions.
I just want to say thank you for your work.
Thank you.
It's important. Just for educational purposes, can you talk about ADA and the sort of burden of proof that a leasie would have to prove to demonstrate disability?
Per disability? Yeah, so the definition of disability under the ADA is going to be a little bit different than the Fair Housing Act. The Fair Housing Act, and, well, it's actually really broad under the state fair housing law, which is the Fair Employment and Housing Act. And that just says that you have an impairment that limits one or more daily activities or essential life activities, so that can be sleeping, eating, walking, talking, breathing, any of those things. So it's actually really, really broad, which means that when we're helping clients who need reasonable accommodations, we can do a lot with that, right? Like, for example, we get a lot of habitability cases. Well, we don't do straight habitability cases because we're an anti-discrimination organization, but if there's a disability connection, then we may be able to get involved. So, for example, we just, we just settled a case here in Solano County, actually, for a client who had really bad mold in her apartment and had severe asthma, and she called code compliance and they weren't doing anything, but then once we brought a complaint saying that they were essentially not accommodating her disability by not addressing the mold that was exacerbating her asthma, it was also a fair housing violation, and so she, she was forced to move before she even called us because the mold was so bad, but they were, basically, they had to pay her $27,000, and they also agreed to change their reasonable accommodation policies. And I hope fixed the mold in that unit for whoever's living in there now.
Through the chair, thank you so much, and I was especially happy to hear about the investigation work that you do, and two questions pertaining to that. Do you also explore any racial disparities in rental amount increases?
Yeah, so basically, if someone came to us and said, I think my rent was raised higher than my neighbor's rents because of my race, that would 100% be, you know, if we were able to corroborate that or get some evidence of that, that would be 100% a fair housing issue, something we could bring a complaint on. There's also, you know, depending on certain investigations, sometimes we do survey investigations where we actually knock on doors to see how are all the people in a particular building being treated. This happens when people, for example, will say, I don't think our landlord is processing reasonable accommodations correctly, or I think the landlord is making repairs for all the white tenants but not the Latino tenants, right? And so if somebody came to us and said, I think the landlord is raising their rent for all of the black tenants but not the white tenants, or at a higher rate for the black tenants than the not the white tenants, testing isn't really going to get at that evidence, but a survey investigation might.
Perfect. And then you touched on it briefly, the other question was, do you, or do you plan to do any investigation work around home purchasing and the fair housing in purchasing real estate?
Purchasing? So we haven't done sales tests recently, although we certainly could do a sales test. It's getting a little bit more complicated with the way that sales happen and they're sort of like the interaction with the brokers, but what we do do a significant amount of and have done in Vallejo is lending testing and appraisal discrimination testing. We've done quite a bit of work around appraisal discrimination, it's kind of our specialty.
Any other questions?
We also have lots of materials for people, because we do home buyer, first-time homebuyer training, and so we have lots of materials around discrimination in the sales market, but we don't, we haven't done like an audit on that in a while.
Through the chair, this has been great information, we hope you come back and see us again.
Okay, thank you so much for having me.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all of you.
I love the data, thank you so much.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Through the chair, we, staff would like to provide an update as it relates to our recent subrecipient grant that we would like to disperse. So recently, we, I'm sure, I'll go back. In the past, I'm sure you recall, there was an RFP process when we, when we, for use of CDBG funds, where we have a RFP process and a subcommittee comes together and they review the package and make decisions on who and how much will be granted to each subrecipient. So we received, we received some information from, through our consultant, that's allowable by HUD, for grantees, which will be the city of Vallejo, to select a subrecipient without going through the RFP process. The RFP process is not, it's a standard process, but it's not a requirement. And so due to staffing capacity to monitor grantee, subrecipients, staff made the decision to bring for you their selected subrecipient for CDBG funds. And we only intend to forego the RFP process for this year so that we can staff, we can build our staffing capacity so that we can better serve the subrecipients, and also with that, we'll incorporate training for the subrecipients for those that wish to apply. So at this time, due to staffing capacity, we don't have those services to offer, and we wanted to ensure we align, remain in compliance with our housing element as it relates to fair housing, so we selected Fancy as our selected, our subrecipient for this, for a portion of the CDBG funds.
Thank you, Director Jones.
And Charlie may have some additional information to add.
Through the chair. So there are certain, will Fancy be allowing some of those funds to go to agencies that anticipate some funding from, for, from CDBG for 2026? Or is it all going, I don't, I don't understand what you're, could you help me understand?
So, Charlie, what's the amount that, for Fancy? Forty-seven? It's $43,000, which was requested from Fancy that we are awarding. The rest of the funds, we're, all the funds doesn't, don't go to Fancy. It's $43,000 that's assigned to Fancy. Next year, when we do the RFP process and we receive the grants, we'll disperse it according to the number of subrecipients that apply.
Through the chair, I have to look at Chair Bundy.
Yeah, I know.
Through the chair. So they, they received $43,000 in the previous fiscal year, so we're just duplicating, copying the same for this fiscal year. So what we have learned from our consultant is, because HUD has specific definitions for contractors versus subrecipients. So when we award our nonprofits, they're our CDBG subrecipients, and they are not subject to that procurement process. So we learned that. Versus contractors like our consultant, which we have to go through that process, where we have to ask for quotes from at least three different vendors. So that's HUD's definition, and since, like what our director said, we are And since, like what our director said, we are extremely understaffed, we didn't have the time and the manpower to go through. It's an extensive process. I know right now only Chair Bundy and Vice Chair Jackson has gone through that process where we, we have to put out the actual procurement document, do a mandatory presentation, present it to the commission, have a subcommittee. We call you in virtually for maybe at least two meetings. It's really like, I would say, a two-to-three-month-long process. So when we got guidance from our consultant, we just, Fancy has always been our partner ever since I've been here. And they are, like what our director said, and Julia, they are essential to our housing element. It's part of the city's general plan, since in California, there's such a thing as that affirmatively furthering fair housing. So we actually have to use an agency like Fancy to do that kind of work, to deliver those kind of services.
Through the chair, one last question to be very pointed. There are two agencies that I know for sure, in the previous years, were very emphatic about their funding. There's two that come to mind. There may be more that are dependent upon some of their funds in order to do the services that they're doing, and that number is growing. So want to make sure, and Director, please help me understand, will they receive any of their, so if we're not doing an RFP, they can't apply? Is that, am I correct in that thinking?
Well, we can, we can assign, like similar to how we assigned for Fancy, we can assign the, the concern is staffing capacity to oversee those subrecipients and ensuring that they're in compliance with the program requirements. And that's where the challenge has been.
That's where it has been. So my, my question then is, when will we notify them that they will, we will, we're not taking that strategy for one year, that we're deferring that process, and they would have to come back and apply in the future? Are we, are we notifying them? So does everyone ask, understand why I'm asking the question? There's, there's, I'm not the chair anymore, I get to do this, yes. There's three or four organizations in our city that depend on this funding. I think you know who they are, Bundy. House of Acts, Catholic Charities. So there's like four or five of them. And so I just want to make sure that applied and either have served our community in the past one to five years. And without that funding, I'm wondering, I'm wondering, do they know that we're not doing this? And when will we notify past applicants that we will not be doing this process in the future for the, for one year and that we're going, if I'm understanding what you're saying, Director, correctly, I understand the staffing, I do. I'm just concerned about how we communicate this to people that have applied in the past. And I do understand that they have, have had problems with their compliance. But they serve such large disparate populations, if not at-risk populations. I'm wondering, when will we notify them that we're not doing this level of process? And what the impact of that will, will be?
Through the chair. So at this, at this time, we, we have not prepared to, to any notification, but we can notify, to your point, we can notify previous applicants who apply for, for CDBG funds to inform them that they can apply in the upcoming year. And it's so, and it's solely, and I just want to be clear, it's not that we don't want to assist.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I do understand, which is why I think it's more important for us to get out there with messaging before, before, in the, in the future, we'll have the opposite, right? So if we could potentially, my recommendation, through the chair, is that we notify them, Director Jones, in some way that helps them and maybe answer a few questions if they have any, maybe they can leave questions on a line for us so that you have a, so that the team has a smooth sailing for the next round of funding when, when our staffing is back online.
And through the chair, and something we can offer in preparation, we can notify them, and in preparation for the nonprofits to prepare next year, it would, we as a, as staff can build up and have a dedicated person to teach a nonprofit, how to be a good nonprofit in order to receive these funds, because we don't want to take funds back after they've been awarded.
I echo that sentiment, Director Jones, with all excitement.
If I may ask a question through the chair. I just wanted to clarify that for, there are still funds available for these program, or these subrecipients, so there's no funds, because I believe we're just not doing the RFP process, but now staff can directly bring it to the commission? Is that correct, or am I misunderstanding that?
So we're foregoing the, the previous RFP process and we're, we're implementing the, the ability to select someone for CDBG, and we select it based on the services that Fancy has provided in our housing element. We have not, we have not intended, we do not intend to open it up or offer any CDBG, CDBG funds for nonprofits through this, the rest of this fiscal year so that we can staff up and we can have a trainer on site that can possibly give them the best service that they need so that they can be a good profit, nonprofit to assist the community.
Last comment through the chair. Director Jones, I acknowledge that your department has been working with very little staff for a long time. So lending my complete support, but just advising that we should communicate with the past and the present. Prior to your arrival, there was lots of application and time went into it, and, and people were anticipating, you know, due to the current climate, I would anticipate your number of applicants to go up, not down. So if, if you're not planning to do that process, better to notify them sooner rather than later.
Through the chair. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, any other comments, questions? So item six is Report of the City Council Liaison. Any reports? Thank you, Councilmember Letezu. Seven is the Community Forum. Anyone wishing to address the commission on a matter for which another opportunity to speak is not provided on the agenda and which is within the jurisdiction of the commission to resolve is requested to submit a completed speaker card to the staff secretary. When called upon, each speaker should step to the podium, state his or her name and address for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes pursuant to Vallejo Municipal Code Section 2.20.300. Speaker cards?
Yes, Chair, we have four speakers.
Through the chair, I also would like to make a comment. One of the speakers I asked to present to the commission this evening, and I would like for them to combine their time and give a complete conversation, and they were also participants in this year's Diversity Day that happened here in the city. So commissioners, I'm going to ask to borrow five minutes of your time extra this evening. Please proceed. Through the chair, can I, can I do that?
It's okay with me.
Thank you.
First speaker is Marco Cardenas.
This is the speaker that I'm speaking of. So through the chair, Mr. Marco, you have some extra minutes, use them wisely.
Thank you. Commissioner. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Marco Cardenas. I'm a homeless advocate and a, I have a nonprofit called Path Finders for Hope that I'm founder of. We just completed Vallejo's most comprehensive survey of 20, 228 direct interviews for homeless men. This data does not include women, which means the crisis is even larger than these numbers suggest. And the findings aren't just surprising, they're a wake-up call that demands the board's immediate attention. Imagine walking into a hospital where there's three out of four patients seeking emergency care and being turned away. You call it a humanitarian crisis, you demand action. That's exactly what's happening in Vallejo's homeless service system. Vallejo's homeless population grew about 50% between 2022 and 2024, from 450 to 682 people, according to Zalano County's point-in-time count conducted in January 2024. Housing is absolutely part of this crisis, but what's often overlooked is a deeper issue, a breakdown in service delivery. Even when housing units or funding are available, the system fails to connect people to them, which is not facing a shortage, we're facing a system that's too slow, too confusing, and too hard to access. Seventy-four percent of people who actively reach out to agencies or nonprofits that, that need for help, didn't receive any services. Let me say that again. Three out of four individuals who asked for support were turned away with nothing. This isn't about people refusing help, it's about a system that consistently fails the very people it's meant to serve. The result, a total collapse of trust. Seventy-six percent of the individuals that we surveyed rated the experience with local agencies or nonprofits as unsatisfactory or very unsatisfactory. The system is so broken, many have stopped believing that we can't even help them. And that's exactly how they were, they were mentioning it to me. And I, it was just real surprising that they're, they're telling me this. This survey was conducted just for me, for, for my nonprofit, but it turned into something else, and I had to say something, you know? Sixty-five percent of unsheltered men in Vallejo have been living on the streets for over a year. We're not just failing to end homelessness, we're creating a long-term chronic homelessness through a system that isn't working. Seventy-two percent of individuals we're surveying want support services, and among them struggle with substance use. Sixty-two percent said they were willing to work on recovery if stable housing was part of the solution. The desire for help is real. The readiness of change is real. What's missing is a system that actually connects people to support that they're asking for. Right now, Vallejo, the broken system is producing real measurable harm. Number one, emergency service costs tied to homelessness are projected to reach 3.2 million annually, according to the city's proposal budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Local businesses are losing revenue as customers avoid areas impacted by visible street homelessness. They're even leaving, leaving the town of Vallejo. They're looking at Walgreens, you know? That's, that's crazy. And tonight, 682 human beings are sleeping outside in our city. Commissioners, we're spoken directly with men living in the crisis. They've told us what's broken and what they need. Seventy-two percent are ready to engage, and sixty-two percent are ready to make changes. So the question is, isn't whether they're ready, the question is, are we, as, as a board member, as commissioner, city council, you know, managers, the city manager's office, we continuing to operate a system that fails three out of four people, allowing Vallejo's homeless population to grow another 50% over the next few years? Or we can act. The data is clear, the need is urgent, the people are ready. What do we do next will determine whether Vallejo becomes a model of transformation or a cautionary tale of systematic failure. I respectfully ask this board to invite me back for a full presentation of these findings so we can walk through the data together, hear directly from the voices behind the numbers that begin shaping real and actual solutions as a team. Now, what I gave to the secretary was the full report of my findings, and I just couldn't believe what was happening. Again, these, this, this survey was just for me and my nonprofit, and it turned into something else. And I have to say something, because I see it, I'm out there, me and Joey are out there, and I don't see any of the, these nonprofits or agencies out there helping them, even, especially when they're doing a sweep. You would think they'd be out there trying to help them resources, right? They're not. I'm out there, and it's sad what I'm seeing. They're, they're taking the people's homes, they're taking their belongings, they're taking their tents, they're taking everything that they've owned, throwing away. Why? And there's no plan for them to, you know, to actually go. And, and so this data I bring to you, and so if I can be on the agenda for the, for the next meeting, I think it's imperative that I go ahead and do a presentation and let you all know the full findings that I have. Thank you.
First, thank you, Mr. Marco. This has been the most concise dataset we've received on homelessness from the community in the last three years. And the amount of time and cost to print this information, deliver this presentation, we want to thank you, the entire commission, speaking through the chair. And so I ask you this evening to allow us to consume this through the chair and review this, because this is extensive. And it's a problem that I'm sure that, you know, you've heard from former Commissioner Carzalis in the back, and I'm sure you've heard from members of city council. And I think you've heard this evening just how much change is happening in our city. You've heard from our director, the shortage in staff. So I'm going to ask you to give us just a moment to consume it. Commissioners, out of full disclosure, my, my daughter actually knows Mr. Marco, she works in the city and connected me to him when she dropped off some, some bags that she had prepared for our Diversity Day, Dignity Day. And so that's my connection to Mr. Marco. But what's really imperative that I want to share with the commission about Mr. Marco, and then I'll take my seat, is that his work is deliberate, his work is meaningful, and he's there in person. There's no one else serving or talking or asking questions. This is face-to-face, direct data being captured for us, real time.
Yeah, it took me about two months to put this together.
Thank you.
Especially the layout of the report, and it's very intensive and it's very eye-opening.
Yes.
Extremely eye-opening, because I don't think, I don't think the city council, the city manager's office, I don't really, don't think they really know what's going on out there. They think they do. I don't think they know the full story. And, you know, that's why I'm here. I'm here, I need to, I'll talk to whoever I need to talk to for people to wake up.
And thank you. So how it works to agenda, into agendize something, there's a process, and that's what this would be, would be a process of agendizing this presentation. So I will ask Chair Bundy to work with our staff and see how to agendize this conversation in the future. And of course, you have behind you one of our city council members who represents this commission. But more than anything this evening, this commission wants to thank you for your time. This is not easy work. And while we all cannot understand the meaning of this, most people are less than six pay, pay, what is it, payments, payroll, paychecks, that's the word, six, I was going to say direct deposits, six direct deposits from being homeless. And so this is a, this is something that's very dear to this commission, and we want to thank you, Mr. Marco. So a process to agendize will be presented to our board chair. He will work with staff in order to get that into our space. Director Jones will advise us, and that's how this commission can move forward.
Thank you. And I gave business cards to secretary to give, to give to y'all, so if you guys have any questions or want to call me, please feel free.
Thank you. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Turn it back over to chair.
Next speaker is Jose Carizales.
Jose Carizales, congratulations, Chair Bundy and Vice Chair Jackson. I welcome my good friend, my young friend, Marco. He, him and I talk every once in a while, so I'm able to help him. It's great information, and I applaud his efforts and all, and what he does out there in the community. Where do I start? Housing with wraparound services will end homelessness. I want to give a little bit of a story that just happened recently while there's displacement out here at the library. Seventy-four-year-old woman, lived in, out there for three years, this would be her fourth winter. She was given two options yesterday, either go to the hospital or be arrested. Apparently, she's 74 years old, apparently she has a no-bail warrant, as was told to her by the police officer. So of course, she chose to go to the hospital. The same day yesterday, she came out of the hospital at four o'clock. She found a place to stay in a car, allegedly a friend of hers. And now she's sitting out there on, on the bench. So that's an example of what this city does, the city of Vallejo does to unsheltered populations. So that's an example of what this city does, the city of Vallejo does to unsheltered population. I want the commission to know the truth that's out there. Staff will tell you, and I don't mean Director Jones, comments not directed towards Director Jones. The city of Vallejo's staff are not forthcoming, nor are they very transparent in what they do. I know it because I have been out there 10 years. I have video, I have pictures, and I have my own eyes, what I see. Don't be fooled. They'll tell you that they stored my unsheltered friends' items, and they don't. She came back with a bag from the hospital. They threw away her tent, her blanket, her bottles of water, her box of books that she enjoys reading, her glasses, her hat, her walking chair, her clothes, her shoes, her socks, her blanket, her pillow. All of that's gone. Her wheelchair, her walking, all of that's gone. Housing, I want to emphasize with this commission, please continue to hit this city hard and develop and create forms and types of housing. This is a bad example. This is offensive. This is undignified, but that's what the city of Vallejo does to a 74-year-old disabled elderly woman who's this tall, 80 pounds soaking wet. Her hands thin, red cheeks, her face is swollen. But that's what they do. Give her two options, hospital or arrest. Thank you for allowing me to extend my time a little bit. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Carizales. Do we have another speaker?
Yes. Next speaker is Cheryl Imayu.
Yamu.
Yamu, sorry.
Welcome, Cheryl.
I'm not going to take up too much of you guys' times because I already loaded all my documents on housingcityofvallejo.net. So if you guys want to go look, I didn't want to take up too much of you guys' time. I'm a little irritated, but I'm not going to take it out on you all because it's not you guys' problem. But I live in Vallejo. I've been at this residence in for two years, and I've been complaining to everybody that listen, and I'm falling on deaf ears. So I've been living in this property for two years. When I moved in, it was new way management. That was January 1st. They changed over to a new management company. So I went in to change, you know, do my annual, to turn in some documents, and come to find out, the new management haven't been paid since four months. That's not my issue. I pay my rent. I don't know why new way management and Bay Area management haven't, that's not my problem. So the manager that I've never met before emailed, just said, oh, welcome to Bay Area Management, emailed, fell on deaf ears, but when it was time for that check to come because it was falling four months flat, she stalked me. And I'm going to say stalked, that's what it was. She stalked me, she got the check, they backpaid her, fell flat. So July 31st, me and my son couldn't understand, and the neighbors, why we was getting sick, sewage spill. This is all in the city of net. You can see it. I've been complaining for months. Nobody contacted me, fell on deaf, like, this is, you'll see, and I got a lot loaded. Y'all are going to be reading documents for two days. But got this loaded. July 31st, she calls me only to get her check. She gets the check, she sends somebody over to see the sewage spill. They're going to take care of it, nothing happens. September 12th, if I'm correct, I'm pretty sure I'm correct, September 12th, I'll get somebody out there, nothing happens. Communicate with her September 20th, pretty sure I'm correct, nothing happens. She says she's going to send somebody up there. I'm pretty sure, September 23rd, same thing, I'm going to get somebody out there. Now, the sewage spill has gotten so bad to where now we have to go to the hospital, me and my son. So we had to go to hospital. I got paperwork, toxics, they got it all, it's all in my doctor's notes. I didn't upload that because it's my doctor records. I was willing, but they said, no, we can't do that. So we had to take blood work. So my doctor said, you can take blood work, nausea, throwing up, upstairs neighbor cat getting sick, they had to go to hospital. So it's, I'm a little frustrated, but so they did the blood work, waiting on the blood work. They came, Jesse, I can't remember his last name, but a nice guy named Jesse, came on the 18th, went to the hospital on the 18th, my son and I, because of sewage spill. That was the day of our inspection. So he rescheduled for the 25th, came back on the 25th. The landlord was very aware that the inspection was on the 18th, still didn't fix the sewage spill, called the city of Vallejo, told them it was spilling over. They said, that's not their problem, it's a landlord problem. The lady had fell on deaf ears since she got that money, fell on deaf ears. So they came back on the 25th, they failed her. So I've been failed, I gave you guys a letter, read it, and you can read the upload on the city of Vallejo. You can see everything I'm talking about. I got pictures, everything, every documentation, every communication with, I can't pronounce her name, I apologize for pronouncing Narcista, yeah, I love her, Rosanna, I love her, they've been very helpful, Natalie, very helpful, so these people, Maria, oh, thank God, anyway, I'm a, sorry I said that. No, I'm not. But anyway, yeah, that part. But anyway, sewage spill is still there, so I'm not even, I've been staying at a friend's house because we're getting sick. So they failed her, and the paperwork, it said, in my housing paperwork, my doctor paperwork deemed, lived there, housing paperwork deemed to live, so I'm not even at home. I'm not even standing there. We're getting sick, throwing, yeah, and they just did blood work, so I'm waiting on that to come back. Mold, feces, ammonia smell is spilling over. If you look at the, it's all loaded. It's all loaded, it's all loaded. I've been contacting everybody that'll listen. I even went to legal aid today. They told me all they can do is have her to relocate me. They can't do nothing else but that. So I don't know what you guys can do for me, but I've been getting, I have high blood pressure, I have diarrhea problem, and I have a cardiologist, I have a palpitated heartbeat. This lady is very aware of that, and you guys, she don't care. It's like she got the money, she disappeared. Then I found out they're also, the same place I live is licensed up under four different names. It'd only take one person to be licensed up under one property, am I correct? Four different names.
Excuse me, through the chair, Ms. Yamu?
Yes, ma'am.
Yamu? I'm the, I am the housing director.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just want to remind you, your time is up, but I do hear you, I have your information. I had a chance to go over it, and I kind of have an idea of what's happening based on what you just provided me.
I think I left your message, too.
Just from a trained eye.
Thank you.
So what I will ensure to do is have someone contact you tomorrow.
Yes.
So that we can explain to you next steps, okay?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for providing this information.
One property licensed up under four different names. Just saying. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Cheryl. Have a good evening.
Next speaker is Marissa S.
My name is Marissa Serafino. I not only am here to represent myself, but I also am representing, I'm on the Human Relations Commission, so I'm a commissioner as well. So Ms. Nash asked to make sure that I, when I came here today, that I bring up the fact that we have been, people have been reporting to us about the encampment sweeps, and that we were told in our meeting by the city attorney that they do hold this stuff for a certain period of time, but from the reports that we're getting back, that they are being thrown away. So she wanted me to make sure I made that point on behalf of the commission. Now, I'm going to speak for myself. I attended the Citizens Academy just recently, and I'm not, I know these, my numbers are going to be a little off, so I'll say approximately, but when the housing came and did their presentation, what we were told is that HUD allows, is it 20, like, close to 2,200 vouchers? Something like, it was like somewhere around there, and we're only utilizing 1,600. So that would mean that there's, and I know there's so much more behind it than that. Trust me, I know, there's, it comes from different pots and all that stuff, but just know from, just for simple math, to hear that is just concerning, that there'd be that many vouchers that aren't being utilized. And if it's staffing that needs to be done, or, you know, we were talking about this in the Human Relations Commission, however, we can help you as commissions to help each other because we do work a lot with the homeless. So help us, help you, help them, however. Now, I have my own personal story, is that, being that I am on the commission, I volunteer at all the home, at the, all the warming centers. Every time there's a warming center, I volunteer. I myself am homeless. I have been living in a hotel for two years, and I was so excited when the Section 8 list opened up. I help people do their paperwork. I procrastinate, I'm not going to lie, but I turn my paperwork in, I swear to God, at 4:45 PM on the deadline, and I was told I turned it in too late. It got chartered in on the 21st. We did exchange emails. I was told basically at the end, my mom took me because I didn't have a car that day. So she is a business owner, she's a citizen of the United States, I mean, of Vallejo, and she also said, oh, I took her, you know? And we were told that it's not going to be honored, that my paperwork will have to be, have to wait till the next sign up. And the last sign up was nine years ago. And I volunteer, and I serve on your commission for homelessness, so it was a little concerning, but I do live that lived experience every day. I am for the kids. I would believe not one kid should be homeless in this city. I watch kids all the time. There's a family sleeping on the side of the red roof right now, outside. And I do everything I possibly can to help. I work a lot with Joey also, but these are my people, and it takes a village, and there's a lot of kids out there that, you know, there was a boy that lived with red roof his whole life, and when he turned 18, he said, what am I going to do? I can't even read. And he was shot recently at City Park trying to rob somebody. And that's just one of many stories I could tell you about, but I will say that I do this because I believe in the system. I have 24-year-old, a 20-year-old, and a 14-year-old, and I'm a mom at the end of the day, and I'm going to be a mama bear, you know? So anytime I see any kids that are homeless, I just want to, you know, but I just want to put that all out there and just let you guys know we're here to help, and whatever we can do as a commission also to help you guys, let us know, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
So through the chair, for all of our speakers this evening, we want to say thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your transparency. Thank you for lending yourselves to our city and all the efforts that you do to make it a better place. I'll turn it over to Chair Bundy to take us through the agenda now.
Item number eight is the public comment regarding consent calendar items. Members of the public wishing to address the commission on consent calendar items are requested to submit a completed speaker card to the staff secretary. Each speaker is limited to three minutes pursuant to Vallejo Municipal Code Section Requests for removal of consent calendar items received from the public are subject to approval by a majority vote of the commission. Items removed from the consent calendar will be heard immediately after approval of the consent calendar and agenda. Any cards?
There are no consent calendar cards.
So then item nine is the consent calendar and approval of agenda. Item A.
Did you close the community forum?
Oh, can we close the community forum, please?
Community forum is closed.
Thank you. Item A is approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda stated.
Do we have a second?
I will second that, to the chair, I will second that motion, that motion.
Through the chair, we'll do a vote for the approval of the agenda. Commissioners Bundy?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stuland?
Aye.
Thank you.
And item B is approval of the minutes.
Through the chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes for, yeah, it was Commissioner Stuland, actually.
I'm sorry, through the chair.
I'm so sorry, through the chair, the last vote that was, motion that was made, unfortunately, I think Commissioner Stuland was the person who seconded it, but she also seconded, so, but just clarifying.
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you, Vice Chair.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Through the chair, I'll go ahead and second it.
Commissioners Bundy?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stuland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 10 is the action calendar. Members of the public wishing to address the commission on action calendar items are requested to submit a completed speaker card to the staff secretary. Each speaker is limited to five minutes pursuant to Vallejo Municipal Code Section 2.02.420. Any speaker cards?
There are no speaker cards.
Excuse me, excuse me, through the chair, I just, I want clarification because it appears like, as if we missed an item. I know it was reported, but I don't believe it was overheard. Would there be a report from the city council liaison today?
I've asked.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure she, city council liaison had her opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jones. Item 11 is written communications. Do we have any written communications?
Through the chair, we don't have any written communications.
Thank you, Shari. Item 12 is report of the committee, report of the committee or board secretary. A is report of the secretary.
Through the chair, I do have a couple of reports, actually, a couple of announcements. First is we, the city is hosting the board and commission, board and commission appreciation dinner on October 30th. That's a Thursday from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. I'm not sure if all the commissioners have received the email. We, I will forward you the email, because sometimes I think it happened a year ago where some of the commissioners did not get the email. It's going to be at 3729 Sonoma Boulevard. The place is called Sweet, Sweet Traditions? Sorry. But I'll email you more information, but it's on October 30th, a Thursday, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. My second report or announcement is that the city has several vacancies for city boards, commissions, and committees. So we just want to make sure we put it out there. As for our board, the housing authority board, we actually have two tenant commissioners, two tenant commissioner vacancies, but they must be a housing choice voucher program participant. So there's two vacancies, and one must be 62 years of age or older. So that's our requirement for the two housing tenant commissioners. And then we have other commissions and boards that are needing commissioners as well. Our members of the public can go to the city's website under Boards and Commissions page, or they can go to the city clerk's office, which is the third floor of the city hall.
So clarification, the one vacancy that they must be 65 years. So, clarification, the one vacancy that they must be 65 years, 62 or older, and that voucher recipient?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Both vacancies must be Section Eight voucher holders.
And also specifically the Housing Choice, not project-based?
It is. It's. That's all for my report, Chair.
Thank you, Chari. Item B, reporting to City Attorney.
Through the chair, our City Attorney is not here.
Item C.
Just one briefly, Chair. I'm hoping that this evening signifies that there are leaders within the housing, I'm sorry, the unhoused population, that we may be able to leverage his voices to communicate certain strategies of the city. And hopefully tonight is one of many conversations we hear directly from the people that we're serving, and the reason why we're all here, in addition to the residents of the City of Vallejo. It is the, it is the organizational goal for those who are working dignity on our behalf, is that they are heard, and they have an opportunity to share real time what's happening in our unhoused strategies, stratagems, and whether or not we have success that we can actually codify in the future, for future reports. So, I know it's a little longer this evening, I want to thank the commissioners, but that is the purpose of tonight's presentation. And I think, City Councilwoman Lettigie would like to echo that comment, maybe go in a different direction.
Thank you. I know I passed up my time, but, you know, I'm reclaiming my time. Chair Bundy, congratulations. I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that. So, first of all, I just want to thank you all for being here, and thank you for serving. It really means personally a lot to me, as well as professionally, that you're here and that you're serving our community. And I just want to share that the Housing Authority has received over $700,000 as a grant from the state of California, and so our director, she will be working with her team and her upline, and she will bring recommendations around what we potentially can do with those dollars. So I'm really excited about that. And additionally, we are, we had asked that the city staff take over the Homeless Round Table, that's what it's called, but, from Vallejo together. So I met with ACM Conlee and her team, along with my colleague, a couple of my colleagues, around how we will structure that meeting, and how often we'll meet, and the items that we'll be discussing. And so, some of the things that we're really going to work on is really working from a case management perspective, not having the PII, meaning Personal Identifiable Information, but really being able to follow what's going on at the different encampments and different places where services are being deployed, getting individuals into the HMIS system, and this is a system for the COC, so that we understand what are the service needs and the different types of needs for individuals who are unsheltered. The reality is, of course, we all know this, we don't have enough housing, but we need to begin a process, we need to be consistent in that process, and really work towards strategies that will help us mitigate having unsheltered individuals within our own community. So that is something that we will continue to work on diligently. It is very important to me personally and professionally, and so this work, as we continue to move forward, I'll come here and report out, and we'll talk about where we are and get your feedback as we move forward in this work. I do sit on the Cap Solano JPA for strategies regionally, meaning within Solano County. And so, that work is really, again, really important because it's from a Solano County perspective. And one of the things that I really want to see in that work is that we begin to really think more systematically about how to solve complex challenges, especially around housing. And not one city can solve that challenge alone, and literally not one county can solve it all alone. But we do have to have starting places, and we have to be more strategic and look at it from a systems-thinking view, more than just at that micro, but at a macro level. So that particular board, if you will, gives us that opportunity to really engage in those ways.
City Councilwoman, woman Lettigie, through the chair. One of the things that came up recently is the amount of, of damage done to the veterans, the US Army Reserve Building here in the city. For those of you who've not seen those pictures, I would advise you to go and take a capture of those pictures. That building, because I'm a veteran, came up recently in a different conversation, the context of that. And what's very interesting to me is that I'm finding, want to get your feedback on this, there are about four or five captains that people listen to in the larger population of our unhoused. And those four or five people are not represented in any of our conversations, so we don't know what messages they're spreading, we don't know what initiatives they're doing, but the fact that they can gather, congregate, move bodies of that size and do that much damage individually on one particular property, to me, tells me that there was some momentum there. And so how do we plan to capture that momentum? So I'm going to just slow that down a little bit, there's just four or five of them. We met one of them this evening. I like to hear from the people who are speaking on behalf of the messages that we're promoting. So that's one person who has a large following, social media is involved, social, social, sub-social, was that thing you do, Facebook, all that's involved. They move by text message, they're able to take a cohort of individuals, and if you will, levy them up, give them resources, leftover supplies, and make new lodging with very short notice. And none of those people are represented on any of our boards. We're not talking, we're talking to individuals who are unfortunately affected by being unhoused. We're not talking to the champions out there offering assistance that people respect in that space and listen to. So my, my response to you, and I've worked with you now for many years, I know this is your passion, to please, let's not forget that we need to extend our stakeholders. It's not just those of us sitting behind the desk, it's not just those who work in the space, because I don't think that they're the best people to speak to the people. They're not able to get that, if you will, movement from them. But these champions that are out there, if they can move 100-plus people out of one space to another space and do that, if you have not seen the pictures, please go see the pictures. It's, and if they have an aerial view, grab the aerial view. Looking down at the Reserve Center, they consumed 99% of the square footage of that space. Every inch was covered, just covered in trash. The trash is not my message. My message is, how did that one, I don't want to call it an encampment, because I don't like the word, how did that fellowship of people get that big, that fast? And who was the person who was messaging that movement? Where are they in our conversations? So that's my short soapbox for this evening, as I exit chair and give it back to Bundy.
Thank you. Always thank you.
What are you going to say, through the chair?
Two abbreviations you used, HMIS. So just for, for knowledge, HMIS is a database that's sort of a national standard where unhoused people are entered in there in terms of service provision, and COC, Continuum of Care. In my professional role, I've worked for a couple different healthcare for the homeless organizations. And on a fundamental level, healthcare for the homeless is a fiscal designation. It's a pot of funding that comes from, from HERSA, from HRSA, to, to localities. I've, I've always wondered, Solano County Family Health Services gets, gets that money from the federal government, and yet they seem absent from the conversations around service provision. FHS receives money from the federal government to provide outreach to unhoused people in Solano County.
So I'm going to say this. It's not that necessarily those entities are always missing. Sometimes Vallejo has been missing. I just have to be honest about it. And that's, has changed. We are working to ensure that Vallejo is not missing in the conversations. And I'm just going to say it publicly because it is true. It's well-known. And that is something, as a city, we need to work on, and we have been working on it. And I will tell you how I, you know, I do know it, and as we worked on the sheriff contracts, the Board of Supervisors made a comment that this is the first time that they've had so much interaction with the City of Vallejo. And so sometimes we like to think that others are missing, and it's not always true that others are missing, and we need to own where we are, and what we have maybe not always done so well, for whatever the reasons are, there, you know, whatever those reasons are, and what is our commitment to do better. And so, for the time that I've been on this dais, that's been my commitment, is that we show up, that we do the work. And we, when we think about just this one topic, we are not the only city faced with such a complex topic. It's not unusual, the situation that we're faced with. It's not unusual. It's happening nationally. The question is, what are we going to do about it? And how are we going to be consistent until we get there? And that's really what I'm talking about. How are we moving the conversation? How are we moving the work? And how is everyone involved, from elected officials on down in the system, for the City of Vallejo? And it's going to take time, because if you haven't moved it for many years, this is where we are. But guess what? It's doable. We can do it, and we are doing it.
I mean, something I say, like, even 700 unhoused people in Vallejo is way too many, but it's also not an astronomically large population. That's a surmountable obstacle.
Yes.
Thank you for your work.
So, again, thank you all for your work. I really appreciate you. And thank you, Director Jones, for leading all the efforts at the Housing Authority. And I do want to put something on record. We had someone make a comment regarding the information they learned in the leadership class. And one of the things that we have to remember, just because we have a voucher, doesn't mean we have budget for that voucher. Just because we have a voucher, doesn't mean that we can use that voucher. Today, not just this Housing Authority, but housing authorities across the nation are underfunded, they are in shortfall. And when you are in shortfall, you may not issue a voucher. And if you issue a voucher, the funding that's been promised to you to keep you floating, you will jeopardize it. So our director, she is a great steward, and she is doing the things that we must do legally to ensure that the vouchers that we do have, where individuals are housed using those vouchers, have the liberty and the right to continue to do so, because she is following the federal rules. So I want to commend her on that. Thank you.
So moving on. Item D, report of the ad hoc committees, and we have no current ad hoc committees. Item 13, other, Section A is Housing and Community Development Commission Work Plan and Budget.
Through the chair. So this is, this is going to be a future item. I just wanted to put it here in our agenda so that you could expect it at our next commission meeting. What it is, is we haven't done it before, so at our next meeting, I will provide more material, more information about it. So a work plan, it's in our municipal code that says, "Each board, commission, or committee may adopt a work plan that serves to fulfill the purpose of the commission. The work plan shall be aligned with the council's goals and priorities, be feasible in light of staffing and financial resources, and shall be brought to council for approval prior to implementation." And I added the budget too, because we are, we did have a budget last fiscal year. We worked on a $900 budget, because there was an administrative rule about if we had a budget under 900, under $1,000, then we didn't have to have a work plan. But I wanted to make sure that we now, moving forward, work on this work plan, and at the same time, work on the budget as well. And the budget would be for, as we're working on it, since the budget would need to be presented to our finance department to by March of 2026. So it gives us a few months to work on the work plan and the budget. By the next meeting, we could decide on how we could work on this document. What we did previously, as far as the budget was concerned, is we created an ad hoc committee. It was a three-member committee, just like when we do our committees for the procurement process. That's what we've been doing so that the process is more efficient. It would entail the three-member ad hoc committee to meet, I would meet with them, we could meet virtually and work on the work plan. But that's something that we can talk about at the next meeting. I just wanted to make sure that I added it here as a future item.
I'll be a little, can y'all hear me? Okay, I'll be a little nervous to talk, because I feel like my little talk is beneath, you know, the chair and the vice chair. But good evening, I want to piggyback from the councilwoman, so, okay, when, I've been on boards before, and the thing, I don't know, I came up with this about three weeks ago. So it's almost like, maybe, like putting together like a summit a little bit, so it's not getting everybody involved, but you know how some cities or some counties is doing certain things when it comes to housing, and it may work for that, but it's almost like a, where it's like an all-day process, it's like an all-day thing, you do breakfast and lunch, whatever, but it's like you're networking, right? But you're networking with different housing developments. Let's, I'm going to use San Bernardino, just, I'm going to use Fresno, San Bernardino for examples, okay? So you're, you're like networking, but you're, you're not piggybacking from them, but you're, you're networking, you're seeing like, for, like, I'm going to say San Jose. So like how San Jose had that encampment, I, I don't like that word either, I do apologize. So like how San Jose did their unhoused individuals and with the tiny homes, but it's almost like, not piggybacking, but it's a network, you know, doing real estate, you do network a lot, right? So just, just to see, and you have special speakers that come and kind of, you know, give you insights or presentations on how things is done when it comes to the housing, or it's, it's something that the City of Vallejo may, you know, the commission, the City of Vallejo may could use, you know, if something is not working, or it's something that they're, they need help on, that maybe that we're doing, that they're not doing, you know, it's kind of like a collaboration. So we're, since we're all in the same state and we're all having this same issue, right? It takes, they say it takes a village, but we all have to have the passion for doing the same thing, in order, to me, for some things to work. So it's, you know, it's just getting feedback, or, you know, like, this is networking, just so we could, just to see what, what we're not doing that we can do, that can be so we could, just to see what, what we're not doing that we can do, that can be doing a little bit better, you know? And I, I know, I came up with it, well, like, a couple of weeks, because I've been in this situation before, and I, it really worked for me, when it comes to, you know, the networking process, just to venture out, to see, you know, the pros and pros and cons to it, but it, to me, it really like, it really helped with the collaboration, and just because it's something that we could be slacking in the city of Vallejo, that maybe we can pick up and learn from another, another city. So like, the Chair Bundy, Mr. Bundy said, you know, it's 700 people, that's a small number, right? So to me, it's a small number. But, you know, what can, what, how can we get those 700 individuals housed, and that way we have the next 700? You know, just, I just feel like it's a networking thing. I don't know, quote me if I'm wrong, but I just wanna, you know, I just wanted to bring that to the, to the commission, because I feel like collaboration, networking is important. And we all learn, we're still learning, you know, so I just feel like if we come together, and we do this as a state, as a whole, you know, it, I think it will, you know, in due time, I feel like it could, you know, we could see the numbers decreasing instead of increasing, because it's more than just men, and more than women. It's, it's really families, it's really children, the families, and, you know, that's out there unhoused. So, you know, I just feel like if we just could collaborate a little bit more, you know, just, I know it's part of a budget, I know it's gonna take a budget to do so, but I think it'll, it'll pay off in the long run. I mean, quote me if I want, if I'm, I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, come off, you know, kind of harsh, but I just feel like, it, like you said, it takes, you know, it's in due season, it's gonna, it's gonna get better. But you do, like, the 74-year-old woman, you know, you know, what can, what can actually be done for her at her age? You know, it's, this been going on for so long, you know, now she done lost everything, she have to start over. So that's why I'm saying, like, it's, it's gonna get better, but, you know, I think collaboration is the key, to me. Thank you.
Through the chair. I, I hear you. I hear you, Commissioner. And I agree, collaboration is important. So I'm speaking from, as a director, and I'm speaking as a human being that care about people. Collaboration is important. I would like, I would like to just share a little bit about my experience in the last week. I went to a NARO conference in Arizona. National Association for Housing and Redevelopment Agencies. And it's, it's, yes ma'am?
So all of the directors of all cities go, or were you chosen to them?
I'm a part of, I'm a part of the membership, and so, but housing agencies, not just housing authorities, housing agencies nationwide attends these, attend the conferences. And so during my stay, I did a, I took a tour, it was in Arizona, Phoenix, Arizona, and I took a tour. And the tour that was provided by the city of Phoenix was to, to express how they are addressing their homeless, unhoused situation. And we went to three different locations. And one of the locations, they call it Tent City. So the idea was, they took city-owned property, and they placed 200 tents for those who choose not to be within shelter, but want to, you know, remain outside. They provided the tents in one location, and resources, and a, and a facility for cooling and heating, and food distribution, when they, and things like that. They offered mobile services for the shower, which, because the facility could not, was not equipped to accommodate a shower, and bathrooms, and a laundry area, so they provided mobiles, the mobile services. In addition to that, they, they housed 300 individuals, 200 tents, and then they had container homes. And the container units were converted into space that can house those that choose to be indoors. The, the facility was, was really, ran really well. They had onsite services available, right there, and you only can come to the Tent City through a referral, or if, if the local authorities bring you there. So anyone just can't walk in and go, you have to go through the process, but it's a service that's provided, and I thought it was very enlightening, and it actually, it was a, it was a, it was a experience I won't forget, let's say that. That was, that was something I had not seen before. In all, in all my years, I hadn't seen, it may exist, but I had not seen it. And also, they opened, like, as we have, a navigation center for men, women, and families, and co-ed, where men and women can stay together if they're a couple. So, and they also have some affordable housing developments that they, they had city property, and they just built on that land. So the collaboration you're speaking of, I understand, because it is important to learn from others. You know, each one teach one. And so that is something that I intend to bring to Councilwoman Lettis-Joe today, because I wanted that experience to be on record, because that's how much it meant to me, just to be there. The personal belongings. I heard, you know, how personal belongings are destroyed and things like that. Well, their personal belongings, they retain their personal belongings, they're secured, so they have access to them, they're not with them on, at their tent site, but they can walk right to their personal belongings, that's, that's secured. So I think it is, again, collaboration, and I think it's something worth discussing. So as I continue my journey, I will continue to find ways and bring that information to the council, so that they can hear, and you all can hear from me as my experience continues. So thank you.
Asked city staff, we have explored what we call safe parking, you can call it safe tents, many things. And in my conversation with ACM Conley, actually Fairfield has night parking, and they do some similar things, and I've asked her to actually go and have a conversation. The council has asked the city staff to bring back sites for safe parking. We continue to have that conversation. And so, again, just as your experience, we know the many things that are out there, and it's a matter of how we're going to get there, and what works best for the city. And so definitely hear you, and it's very thoughtful what you're saying, and I truly appreciate it. And we're working through our system. And sometimes the government doesn't work as fast as we like for it to work. I've spent my entire career in government, and I believe in government, and I believe when the right leadership is in place, people will thrive. And it is my commitment, along with, I believe the full council, to find solutions, the right solutions for this city. So thank you.
Can I just have just two seconds? I want to express to you, City Councilwoman Lettis-Joe, I've been in several meetings that you're, you're in, town hall meeting recently, and I heard from a lot of different people. What makes Vallejo very unique, in my assessment of all of my city work, which most of you don't know, I'm a consultant, so I do city work with other cities, doing teaching and training and a lot of other stuff, but what I find very interesting is that they have true leaders. They have leaders, they have a strong leadership training, and people are held accountable. And I think what you said that we want to connect to is, you're absolutely right, until you fix the outer perimeter, putting anything in the center will fall. What does that mean? That means law enforcement, that means getting your staff together, it means us kind of dragging and taking the heat from our community, because they view us as their advocates, all those things. Because right now, even if you were to do safe parking, most of the neighborhoods that I pulled, because I've read this before I got here, I've had this report, I've seen it, I saw it on the street, I picked it up during dignity day, most of our neighborhoods, it's not so much people don't want to help, but the amount of risk that their families take by having people come and park in the middle of their neighborhood, that we've not vetted, we do not have a system to contain, we do not have a system to police, only brings on far more greater risks to our city than helping them. So I feel very confident, knowing that you're going after additional support from the sheriff's department, you're going after making sure everyone's trained in leadership, you're going after having conversations with the right people at the right time, although for some, it may seem like we're, we're scattered, we're really not. Until you attack the external circle of surfaces, putting anything in the center will fall. It's my comp.
Thank you.
So thank you both.
Yes.
Can we go home now?
Thank you all for your comments. Any further comments? And at 8:52, this meeting is adjourned.